But we got to do something for our kids. At least you can say I really tried to do more and more and more. Because I want people to stand here and say what I'm saying to you. If my community didn't help me when I made the decision. So it has to change the people recycling and recycling. We gotta do what we can do. We're here to say, oh, they had kids. They don't even know what they have. And so something else is different. They always say we play with them since they had things in there. I could watch them build them since. We started over at 10th School. They knocked down 10th School down and they put up that center. And they had things in that center for social services. We played with them about, we did a lot of things in those centers. Right here, none of them centers are being utilized where they're supposed to be. None. You just have, you definitely have people working in centers that sit down and play hard, running outside, doing all the things they want to do, but not doing what they can do for our kids. They need our community. You need to get some people that have passion, that want to work for them and be a resource for our children. Not just giving them that money because they know a family member and they pray for somebody that got a job. They don't know what they're supposed to do for our kids. Give me the job. There's someone else that wants to help their kid. That's willing to challenge that too and not see it as a bad thing. Instead of giving something to them that's sitting there and not doing nothing. And yeah, I'm not doing nothing. A lot of people ain't paying for none of that because you should pay them. You took a oath. And that oath means you're supposed to help your community. But I took one to the New York City. I had to pay that. I had to take home. I had to come home and we were about to put a lot like a change to be a better citizen. Because I took out of my community and I'm going to give back to my community. So you, you asked us for our vote. Y'all go down there and everybody who matters can vote for you. Come on, let's vote for our kids before I choose you. Let's vote for not to do our kids. I voted for that group soon. I didn't just start this when he got here. I started him way before. I was voting for him before he got here. And I'm gonna vote for him after he becomes something just as good. And I'm gonna have a lot of people that I can use to try to help. So if you didn't say, someone needs to do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any other taxpayer or resident wish to address city council? We would like to sort this time. Name and address of the record.
The problem currently in this city is to, because of that, the building of the bottom of the grocery store is covered by our rust. At that time, there was a public address, and then there was a new address which was a public address. And it seems to that there is an ordinance on your court of view to one question, and then exactly five seconds of your vote. And how a resident will stay in the session specifically to extend the end of the day of the 7th and 31st of the past 14 years. I wonder, I don't know what you mean by four, but I wonder, is that under the government's, if that's a fact, for making a record?
Any other taxpayer or resident wish to address city council? We would like to sort this time.
Name and address of the town, 2011. And I would like to know why was my building forced to go and move from a condemned building to a more condemned building? The building there. And we didn't have no choice back in the day when we got the numbers. Then seven days later, we had to go. We didn't want to go. Then they were going to come there. I want to know why we can't have the freedom or the choice to go to where we want to go and have to force this state to where we are now. And that's without a doubt.
Any other taxpayer or resident wish to address city council? Stay with me.
Mr. President and the previous speakers, city clerk, Detective Patrick Renee, could you give us your answer?
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Ty Chai. I was called that also on 23rd and Park Road. And right now, this is turning a lot of turmoil. It's turned to all residents and me personally, because I just had a tumor removed out of my chest wall mass because of the asbestos and mold in the walls. Even though I wiped it out myself, I was trying to call names. Or anybody else waiting for you over there talking to a dead son of a bitch. Then I saw that now the hits have found another tumor in my back that has to be removed. So that's two tumors that I had to have moved out of my body because of asbestos and mold and fungus that's just growing here and down the walls. I still have repairs that haven't been made within a whole year. I mean, the police brutality and corruption has gotten better. They don't ride on the grass that they used to. Most kids playing outside. Now they're crushing up the building that they tore down right outside. And dust is blowing. Everything is straight water running anymore. How do you expect kids to grow up and be successful? You know, they're shooting on those hot tunes every day. Just by, even if you just pull up and not even get out of your car, Catherine, you can just smell the walls in the air. If you drive over there and take a walk in any of those buildings, any of those houses we've done, Mr. Trish has done, they see, I actually see them. Those cells with mop buckets and their team cleaning some of his home. So I thank you about that. But it's big for them, because this boy is going to take more than nothing to reduce a lot of problems over here. Every day, we had to go through this turmoil. They're also right now, as we speak, they stopped because I'm pretty sure they might have some pressure from somebody. They were actually peeing over fungus in the mold with oil and paint. Not cleaning it off, peeing it right over it. And the elevators don't even work. So you gotta walk through that. You gotta smell it from the beginning to the end of the building. The elevator's don't work. By the way, the cane, it ripped out the whole frame of the elevator. So the elevator's don't even work. So you gotta walk up and down the stairway where it uses a land that makes paint, the paint right over asbestos. And you can see, it's not like you can't see it. All the walls in there are orange, black, green, and yellow. Please do something before something really bad happens and National Guards have to come to a list of events, then the mayor's really going to be in trouble. Because people.
Any other taxpayer or resident wish to address city council? We would like to sort this time. Mr. President, what was the last unit number? This guy.
What's your unit number? My unit number is 23rd and Park Road, apartment 4J.
4J.
My name is Helen Doss. I'm at 201 First Street, in St. Elizabeth. And I ask you a question, if you have an answer. I am concerned about the big trucks that are coming in our neighborhood. And not only for pollution, I feel it's too residential. And I asked the question several days. They used to go around, but of course, they built a house above the waterfront. So can you sort of update me on that?
What I can do is have councilman of the first ward meet with you possibly and update you on maybe going out on First Street, Councilman Grove.
Okay. Because the pollution is, you know, and with too residential, we got children there riding their bicycles in a big mad truck on fire. All the pollution. But I know they were trying to get something out, but it just seems like it's a shoulder shot, you know, because this kind of.
If you'll see councilman Grove, he will follow up with you and give you whatever information you need.
Okay, thank you.
That's councilman over here to my left, the first, he's the councilman. Any other taxpayer or resident wish to address city council? We would like to sort this time.
Hi, my name is Alicia Washington. I live in 225th Road. It's because I have mold and fungus growing out my bathroom. My son came to my house multiple times. He spoke with me. Make me glad my last week, they came, they tore it down. They left all the stuff in the bathroom. I haven't been, they keep my bathroom for six months. It's all gone flush. I got mold and mush on, on everywhere out of bathroom. They, they, they put it up and it came right back again. And I've been trying to call Mr. Hossen. They put it up, Thursday, Friday, they came back down. So I'm out of bathroom again. I've been out of bathroom for six months. My front door, I had to use the butt light to get in and get out. That's the fire hazard. I have three kids that have to leave school at 7:20. And it's just crazy, like they're not doing anything. And I keep calling my son, and he's always not there. But he came out and he told them that they had to fix it. And they didn't do anything. And they moved me from 3A to 220 cousin mode. And now I came to another apartment that's worse than what the other one.
Just so you know, the city clerk is keeping notes on this that we're going to follow up on.
He came to my cc for this versus than what it was. You know, it's bad because they put the blue sheet back up and it spread, the damage over, the white fixture over the stain. It's like there's a fire hazard. You understand what I'm saying?
What's the unit number?
4D, 224D. And that's all I have.
Like I said, the city clerk is keeping track of that. And after this, the follow-up department will be expected.
It's like the mold.
Each case.
Fungus, mush on. I got pictures of my phone, I recorded it. He's saying it is worse than that again. The bathroom can never be used again. That's how bad it is unless they tear the whole bathroom down. Thank you.
I'm going to make sure they get out there right away. Any other taxpayer or resident wish to address city council? We would like to sort this time.
My name is Agent Wallace. I reside at 200 Park Road, 2B. I've gone to the meeting that management had on Tuesday. And really, I was pretty much not too pleased with what she had to say. I'm a woman, and basically what she was saying is something bad, something to appease the people. We don't want to be appeased. People want what's correct, what's fair, and what's just. We do pay our rent. We may pay it late. But we do live in these places. There is a woman who put in a work order on Friday. You might knew, Councilwoman Hamden, you've been there. This is their manager, and I've seen you on the grounds. And I went to her apartment, she put in a work order on Friday. The ceiling is falling down. I was in the office on Monday, and the management people said, oh, it's emergency, we'll have it done. Today is Tuesday. Did not see a contract, or did not see anybody. But I tell you, she has children. If the ceiling falls and it falls on a child who has to use the bathroom facilities, what is it that the council people want to say to that? You didn't know anything? It was nothing that you could do? When I was at the meeting, Chris Folio said, it was not because of the council. It was not because we were coming to you guys that we're having this meeting. But I do believe it was so kind of fire that we, the people, put that made it come out. She told me that Tuesday that she would be here. She's not here. We have questions basically for her and for you. You are the council. We're here to tax pay. We put you here. Unfortunately, a listener is a bad place. Many of you can say that I'm listening. But I'm a judge, and you are. So many of the people, the people here, they listen. Because we're a taxpayer, and we're paying for you, it shouldn't be that. Councilmen said, you know that we're having an activity for our children on Saturday. He's willing to help out. Are you willing to help our children? They are our next future. They need to see young baby faces. They need to know that Joe is trying to do something at Oprah Plaza. Because the parents there are trying to do a lot. Thank you.
Wallace. What is the building and apartment number of that family you were just talking about?
Her, uh, she is in 220, I believe it's 4J.
4J.
Park Road. Exactly. And you can see it, there is a whole large clip right there on the ceiling. She put the work order in on Friday. And what even obsessing is, they did not give you a paper sheet work order. So in essence, it's your word. Don't say it's not going to tax me. It's your word against mine. Or I didn't get the message yet. It's been said and it's been done. It's a lot that needs to be done at Oprah. It needs to be torn down, I agree. Unfortunately, part of the city of Elizabeth is in there, isn't it? Now, it's poor, it's bought us. Women want to work. They want to be independent. They want to be self-sufficient. But people don't get enough time working at Burger King. Not in the past, it's not in the future. You don't want to be on welfare. So you, council people, if they can get money from someplace to tear down one building, I know they can get money from someplace else. By saying, oh, we can't, we can't do that. That's only trying to please me. And as a woman, I'm going to please my man before, and that doesn't wash.
Any other taxpayer or resident wish to address city council? We would like to sort this time.
Good afternoon. My name is Marty Gray. You need 230 Park Road, 4J. I'd just like to know, I'm in a bad building. You can't go back from a flood out of your roof. Now, I want to know, why is it taking them so long to clean up? They knocked it down 413 hours a month ago. Why does it take them so long to get all of that dirt and that crap out of here? They have laid about 10, 15 pounds of dirt. They're all over the back, all over the back of the parking. So now the dirt is down by my window. When I look up the window, I can't even get a fresh air. I smell dirt. I have 63 years old, about 63. I am a married man, and my ass has gotten broken. We have little bit of kids, we have grownups. They, they, the kids are playing outside with their parents. I've been with them 29 years, and I've been going through all kinds of crap over time I've been up there. And I mean, why isn't it taking them so long to remove all of this crap out of here? It's like they're cleaning dirt, like every day they're handling that dirt in the day, you know what I mean? I like to say, when are they going to make this crap out of here? You know, when? I mean, somebody can put some money behind it. You know, I think they're just hoping along to get more money to get out. You know? So that's, you know. You know, so, you know, that's what I would like to know.
Thank you. Any other taxpayer or resident wish to address city council? We would like to sort this time. Sorry, your name is Marsha.
Shidera Young, 224th Road, 3I. I may say something you may have heard already, but my issue is that they, they had to be here for us. They said that they want to have more meetings, more meetings, and more meetings. But they haven't been anything yet for us, for us. I thought today that my city bus on, I mean, my city bus on Friday, I called, they weren't able to get back to it. For today, the check on the Saturday, 72 hours. 72 hours, and I'm in my city. Now, I, I know that they're probably on what they're in the city. So I don't understand why the proper people are not doing what they're supposed to do as far as they're concerned. It seems like they're the only ones getting away with things. When I see everybody else, it's not doing what they have to do. Redevelopment in the community. We have a whole community that's not, that's still sitting. It's like, we're, we're still not getting heard, spelled, or heard. And I don't want to sound like it's local, like we have these kids that's up there going through so much, seeing us, working parents stressing, trying to run back and forth, and the meetings are not being had. So I just want to know, when? When? It seems like it's everything is going in vain. I can see any changes. And I just need to, I just need that question. It's been, we've been waiting, we've been finding meetings that meetings appease the life, and it's still not there.
Okay, any other taxpayer or resident wish to address city council? We would like to sort this time. This will be the last speaker.
How many, Chinese, where's the 523 caution?
She didn't hear, but.
How you have this 523 caution, Elizabeth?
Okay.
You keep, I keep talking about meetings, meetings, meetings. They keep having this lately, Christian, they keep having these meetings, but don't come to a property. Why she having meetings away from her property or what she own? Or she trying to stop. I want, I want to hear that. If you own something, if I own a house, and I want good tenants that, that move in my house that want to be, I want them to take care of my house, my property. I'm living in that house. I would want to establish a place on my property to sit with the people. You keep having meetings away from all day of the time. For people to come just to talk about what? Oh, I'm gonna give you a couple of body parts this way. Now, I'm, I'm, we're caught, we're talking about a lady. Awesome job. I'm gonna give you some hash, let you play your head. No, y'all starting to get nuisance. That's what the policy is starting to look like. You people is getting nuisance. That's how it's been looking at you people. They want people because it's minorities living at Project Silver. That's how it's happening. The other night, a friend of mine gave a birthday party for a friend. Wow, this police is trying to push their way into people houses over a house party. Not even a house party, just a little get together because it's not sun at night, or the music is too loud. No, on Saturday nights, the music gets to be straight to 11 o'clock at night. That's the noise producer, that's when you stop. On weekends, it's 10 o'clock. But you most is not going to push the door. They don't knock. They want to push their way into people houses. And, and, and that's crazy because we come here many times to these meetings to talk about the same issue, the same issue, the same issue. But the issue is not very solved. And all on that property. And the property is thick, and they talk about mop pockets. Man, you make this mess from there to each other, man. They don't have no tools. They don't have nothing. So I don't know how she can sit here and say somebody stole the mop pockets in the building when she can tell my own workers knocked the mop floor every day. You're using too much. Cut back on the fine. They brought a big guy that's upon it by this way. They get cases of it, but they not knocking out the mop floors every day. Everything you got flies, everything inside the building. They don't clean the garbage shoes. They don't do nothing. So where these people is feeling stuff like it ain't nothing too civil. They don't have no sheep rock. They don't have no plastic. They don't have no compound. They don't have nothing but a mop. They had a mop, bro. But flies are prepared. They don't have workers that really do the prepared to the body. Their workers do it in second. They put rocks on the back, Bruce. The management is smart. I want to talk smart, dude. You go to the office, and they come from the same spot that we coming from. One is coming from Patterson, New Jersey, but she's a real listener, dude. It's, it, it's bad. What do, what do we have to do to resurrect this roots? To fix this problem? What do we have to do? So we coming to now to ask now, what do we have to do to fix this? But she want to have meetings, but she don't even walk to her own property. She don't even come to look in our apartment at all. The furthest she goes is Morris Adams, that office. Or she got about five, six more weeks for a loan, like somebody, nobody to her, to my one school. He just wants you to fix stuff. Then you got William Bailey, he's come on property. He don't even go nowhere near a tenant. He goes to the construction site, says he got a say, and leave. And when you trying to walk to him, he want to talk smart, so I talk to management. I'm not here for that. There's still no area for the kids to play at. When they going to play in the sand cash? Now you got to take them to the doctor, they're going to go away with them. It's still no lights. It's still dark. I don't even let my kids come outside play unless I come home from work. I come home, I'm here to take them, to bring them down to the playground right on South Park Street where my wife finds us. I don't want to go, I don't want to let them play outside. Because there's no way to play. Which one play last? It's nothing. So the next step she had is meeting, President, I appreciate that you asked that woman to walk through her property that she own. That's like, both of y'all, both hands and smile and laugh.
Sir, your friend, sir. This concludes the public speaking portion of the meeting. We will not have a public hearing.
Ordinance number 4324. Amendment to ordinance number 4318 adopted July 24, 2012. Authorizing ordinance to exceed the fiscal year 2013 municipal budget for a building allowance and to establish a capex essentially to revise the amount to $4,184,160.
You heard the reading of ordinance number 4324. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on ordinance number 4324? Once again, you heard the reading of ordinance number 4324. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on ordinance number 4324? Seeing none, I close the public hearing on ordinance number 4324.
Ordinance number 4325. Authorizing amendment to chapter 5, 7, 8, 250. The government of the city of Elizabeth entitled "Right Control and Stabilization", specifically to extend the expiration date to December 1, 2014.
You've heard the reading of ordinance number 4325. Is there anyone present who would like to address ordinance number 4325? Once again, you heard the reading of ordinance number 4325. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on ordinance number 4325? Seeing none, I close the public hearing on ordinance number 4325.
Ordinance number 4327. Authorizing establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Donald Thomas, by 63 Jefferson Avenue.
You heard the reading of ordinance number 4327. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on ordinance number 4327? Once again, you heard the reading of ordinance number 4327. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on ordinance number 4327? Seeing none, I close the hearing, a public hearing on ordinance number 4327.
Ordinance number 4328. Authorizing establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Donald Thomas, by 63 Jefferson Avenue.
You heard the reading of ordinance number 4328. Is there anyone present who would like to address ordinance number 4328? Once again, you heard the reading of ordinance number 4328. Is there anyone present who would like to address ordinance number 4328? Seeing none, I close the public hearing on ordinance number 4328.
Ordinance number 4329. You're standing in ordinance number 3642, adopted August 24, 2014. Authorizing establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Carl David Cooper, 56, Bronx Street.
You've heard the reading of ordinance number 4329. Is there anyone present who would like to address ordinance number 4329? Once again, you heard the reading of ordinance number 4329. Is there? Is there anyone present who would like to speak on ordinance number forty-three twenty-nine? Seeing none, I close the public hearing on ordinance number forty-three twenty-one.
Ordinance number forty-three thirty. Rescind the ordinance number thirty-six fourteen adopted April twenty-seven, two thousand four. Which authorizes establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Maria Pereira by community marshal street.
You heard the reading of ordinance number forty-three thirty. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on ordinance number forty-three thirty? Once again, you heard the reading of ordinance number forty-three thirty. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on ordinance number forty-three thirty? Seeing none, I close the public hearing on ordinance number forty-three thirty. With the consent of my colleagues, I will discuss with the reading of petitions and communications and reports of city officers and move on to ordinances on the first reading.
Ordinance number forty-three thirty-one. amend champion five point sixteen, thirty-seven, a code of the city of Elizabeth entitled water buses, specifically to include the financial status of the applicant regarding unpaid judgments and fees and experience in transportation of passengers.
You heard the reading of ordinance number forty-three thirty-one. What is your question? Move the ordinance for a vote, president. Move this second, are there any comments? Seeing none, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusting.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye, your ordinance passed on the first reading. Public hearing for the consideration of the four going ordinance shall take place at the city council meeting to be held Tuesday, September twenty-fifth, two thousand twelve, at seven thirty. We will not move on to ordinances on my pass.
Ordinance number forty-three twenty-four. amend ordinance number forty-three eighteen adopted July twenty-four, two thousand twelve. Authorizing the ordinance to exceed the fiscal year two thousand thirteen municipal budget was uploading allowance and to establish a cap and specifically to revise the amount to four million one hundred eighty-four thousand one hundred sixty dollars eight cents.
You heard the reading of ordinance number forty-three twenty-four. What is your question? Move the ordinance for a vote, president. Move this second, are there any comments? Seeing none, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusting.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye, your ordinance passed on the final reading.
Ordinance number forty-three twenty-five. Authorizing amendment to chapter five point seven, point two fifty, a code of the city of Elizabeth entitled rent control stabilization, specifically to extend the expiration date to December thirty-first, two thousand fourteen.
You heard the reading of ordinance number forty-three twenty-five. What is your question? Move the ordinance for a vote, president. Move this second, are there any comments? Seeing none, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusting.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye, your ordinance passed on the final reading.
Ordinance number forty-three twenty-seven. Authorizing establishment of personalized handicap parking space for L. K. and Sheffield in twenty-four Halmsted.
You heard the reading of ordinance number forty-three twenty-seven. What is your question? Move the ordinance for a vote, president. Move this second, are there any comments? Seeing none, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusting.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye, your ordinance passed on the final reading.
Ordinance number forty-three twenty-eight. Authorizing establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Donald Thomas by sixty-three Jefferson Avenue.
You heard the reading of ordinance number forty-three twenty-eight. What is your question? Move the ordinance for a vote, president. Move this second, are there any comments? Seeing none, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusting.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye, your ordinance passed on the final reading.
Ordinance number forty-three twenty-nine. Rescind the ordinance number thirty-six forty-two adopted August twenty-four, two thousand four. Which authorizes establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Cooper, Inc., fifty-six Bond Street.
You heard the reading of ordinance number forty-three twenty-nine. What is your question? Move the ordinance for a vote, president. Move this second, are there any comments? Seeing none, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusting.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye, your ordinance passed on the final reading.
Ordinance number forty-three thirty. Rescind the ordinance number thirty-six fourteen adopted April twenty-seven, two thousand four. Which authorizes establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Maria Pereira by community marshal street.
You heard the reading of ordinance number forty-three thirty. What is your question? Move the ordinance for a vote, president. Move this second, are there any comments? Seeing none, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusting.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye, your ordinance passed on the final reading. We'll now move on to the business.
Introduce and approve the fiscal year two thousand thirteen municipal budget in the amount of two hundred sixteen million eight hundred seventy-two thousand six hundred twenty-one dollars twenty-seven cents. Fiscal year two thousand thirteen super utility budget in the amount of nineteen million five hundred thousand dollars and capital budget in the amount of forty-eight million two hundred twenty thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars.
Heard the reading of the resolution, what is your question? Move the ordinance for a vote, president. Move this second, are there any comments? Seeing none, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusting.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye, resolution passed. Hope hearing for the consideration to be held Tuesday evening, November twelfth, two thousand twelve.
Authorizing temporary emergency appropriations for the two thousand thirteen fiscal year municipal super utility budget in the amount of forty-six million three hundred ninety-two thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars. Reject the sole bid received on August fourteenth, two thousand twelve from Miracle Auto and Sales Professional Association, New Jersey, for repairers of vehicles authorized the purchasing agent to react times for sale. amend the resolution adopted June twelfth, two thousand twelve. Authorizing award of receptive contracts for the purchase of electricity through the U.S. Sustainable Energy Joint Meeting to pass corporation and relying energy, New York's LLC, specifically to add savagers' energy patents in Jersey to the contract and change the name over mine energy, New York's LLC, to NRT Business Solutions, Houston, Texas. Authorizing for the contract to Level O's Elizabeth for the publishing of advertising for one year period at a cost not exceed thirty thousand dollars. Authorizing for the contract to Public Service Electric and Gas Company, Somerset, New Jersey, to install four twelve-foot tall classic moon poles, seventy percent park, in the amount of fourteen thousand four hundred fifty-eight dollars one cent. Authorizing proper city officials to enter into a right elementary agreement with Light Tower Five, Port Royal Island, Islandia in New York, to locate place attached install operate maintaining facilities within municipal right of ways within the city for a period of fifteen years. Determining the city of Elizabeth for closes by summary proceedings in REN as provided in the INR foreclosure act. The tax sales certificates held by the city as delineated by the tax collector.
You heard the reading of the resolution, what is your question? Move the resolution for a vote, president. Move this second, are there any comments? Seeing none, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusting.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye, your resolution passed.
Authorizing tax collector to credit senior citizen disability and/or veteran tax deductions for the tax year two thousand twelve, pursuant to a delineated list limited August tenth, two thousand twelve, in a total amount of two thousand dollars. Authorizing tax collector to cancel disallowed senior citizen deductions for tax year two thousand eleven, pursuant to a delineated list limited August twenty-third, two thousand twelve, in a total amount of seven hundred fifty dollars. Authorizing proper city officials to enter into a shared services agreement between the county union and city of Elizabeth Health Department for public health preparedness in response to violent terrorism outbreaks and infectious disease and other public health threats and emergencies at no cost to the city. Establish a lien on the property located at five forty-two South Park Street in the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred dollars for the demolition of said premises. Authorizing proper city officials to execute an agreement for community development program funding proceeding through the year two thousand twelve of nonprofit agencies listed on schedule A for the period July one, two thousand twelve to June thirty, two thousand thirteen, in the total allocation amount of one eight hundred sixty-five thousand two hundred thirty-two dollars. Rescind the resolution adopted February tenth, two thousand nine, designating the MDK Development LLC as the redeveloper of parcel de admitted town road redevelopment project. Rescind the resolution adopted February twelfth, two thousand twelve, authorizing the execution of the redevelopment agreement between the city and MDK specifically to de-design the MDK as redeveloper of parcel de admitted project.
You heard the reading of the resolution, what is your question? Move the resolution for a vote, president. Move this second, are there any comments? Seeing none, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusting.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye, your resolution passed.
Authorizing proper city officials text to all necessary documents to discharge the former occupied basic perpene loan program second mortgage held by the city on the property located at ten seventy-one Bond Street and further authorize the cancellation of this with the agreement. Authorize the proper city officials text to all necessary documents to discharge the former occupied basic perpene loan program second mortgage held by the city on the property located at six oh four Brer Avenue and cancellation of continued basement and restricted covering. Authorize the proper city officials text to all necessary documents and provide a ninety thousand program for perpene loan to the U.S. Community Development Group, LLC, Union through the construction of twelve residential units of a twenty-unit mixed-use building located at four sixty-four sixty-six Spring Street in the amount of five hundred seventy-three thousand nine hundred ten dollars. Establish lees with the removal and disposal of debris on properties listed on schedule A on file in the city courts office in the total amount of thirty thousand five hundred eighteen dollars thirty-four cents. Authorizing for the contract to J.A. Alexander, Inc., in New Jersey, for the two thousand twelve project service room for grand base one at a cost of nine hundred thirteen thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars eighty-five cents. Authorizing for the contract to J.R.C. Construction Company, Inc., in New Jersey, for the city hall front step slide repairs at a cost of sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Authorizing for the water contract to M.E.S. Consulting, P.A., where they in New Jersey, to provide professional engineering services for the design of the Fred Hurstley Pool, desperation project, at a cost not exceed three thousand eight hundred dollars.
You heard the reading of the resolution, what is your question? Move the resolution for a vote, president. Move this second, are there any comments? Seeing none, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusting.
Aye.
Councilman Jack Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye, your resolution passed.
Authorizing for the water contract to Virgil Service Room, Cranford, New Jersey, providing chemical engineering services in connection with police department page back chill replacing at a cost not exceed fourteen thousand dollars plus reversible. Authorizing for the water contract to Virgil Service Room, Cranford, New Jersey, to provide environmental engineering services in connection with the Orion Global Environmental Project at a cost not exceed seventy-two thousand four hundred dollars plus reversible. Authorize contract amendment number one, fine to the contract reported to Joseph Jengoldians and E. To provide construction management services for general renovations and security upgrades at police headquarters in the amount of two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, specifically to provide for additional services in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, increasing the contract amount to two hundred forty-five thousand dollars. Authorize the proper city officials text to the memorandum of understanding and then the notification agreement, the county union, participate in leases at the union county leave composting facility at a cost of two dollars per yard of loose and four dollars per yard of contracted at a cost not exceed seven thousand dollars. Authorize the proper city officials text to all appropriate documents of the two thousand twelve state of New Jersey by the on the replacing fund program.
You heard the reading of the resolution, what is your question? Move the resolution for a vote, president. Move this second, are there any comments? Seeing none, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusting.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye, your resolution passed.
Establish a handicap parking space in front of premises was created at four oh three first Saturday. Authorize settlement, where there's compensation, dislocation, and above order in the basic versus the city of Elizabeth in total amount of eleven thousand seven hundred and three dollars paid to the owners.
You heard the reading of the resolution, what is your question? Move the resolution for a vote, president. Move this second, are there any comments? Seeing none, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusting.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye, your resolution passed. Commendations, we had Myron Shavel by the Coalition to House of Homes. Are there any other commendations? Memorials, Mr. Robert J. Delaney. Are there any other memorials?
Yes, Mr. Delaney. Counselor Delaney, I would like to hold a memorial for Rafael Rosales. He was one of the founding members of the Human Club. He was president for several years. And I had the honor of serving under the Secretary. Essentially, he was a good man and he was an honorable person, and he will be visited. Thank you.
Are there any other memorials? Please stand for moments, sir. What's your judgment?
So, oh, we give a jury.